Fifteen seconds it'll be seven o'clock.
One of Fred Green's.
What? You have fifteen seconds.
I'll forget.
Okay, cause meeting in order, please rise and pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I'd like to have one addition between financial report correspondence. I would like to add Mr. Jeff White from the Richmond Lennox EMS.
If there's no other additions, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of Tuesday, January 8th.
If there's no questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 8th, 2015, county meeting.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the minutes for the January 8th meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the financial report. Coming.
We began the month with $32,447.82. We took in receipts of $143,316.1 and made disbursements of $45,507.51, which leaves us with an ending balance in the general fund of $130,256.32. And as you'll notice, I began to break down for you with the winter tax roll, our various operating and roads, so you can see what's in so far. Of course, our entire millage rate will come to us either during the collection season or from the county treasurer when she disperses the delinquents, but that's where we are thus far.
I like leaving off the color.
One other thing is I would like to remind people that we only are able to sell the dog licenses in the treasurer's office until March the first, after which time the collection of delinquent monies for dog licenses will be conducted by the county sheriff's department. There will be a $40 fee, I believe, for any dog who does not have their license and rabies shots current. So please come in before March the first and get your dog licenses.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the financial report as submitted.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the financial report as submitted. Just a couple things. I appreciate splitting the operating and road revenue on there. And I talked to Stephanie, the head of animal control today, and yes, March 1st, you cannot get a license at Casco. But if you call in or look in the phone book, you can call animal control because people get new dogs that aren't penalized. And you can mail them the papers for the vaccinations and a check, and they will mail you the license. You don't have to drive to Port York. So if it's after March 1st, you can either look in the phone book or give us a call here at the township. Anybody else have any discussion on the financial report? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Moving on, Mr. Jeff White, Richmond Lennox EMS is gracing us with his presence tonight and see what words of wisdom he may have.
Well, I'm not sure if I can live up to that billing or not, but you know, every few times a year, actually, I try to get out to all the communities we serve and just give an update as to what's going on at EMS. I'll just hand these out. Normally, this is a report that I send to the township and I'm sure it gets out to all of you, and this just saved me 44 cents tonight in sending it out and making copies for everybody. So just a couple of quick updates of items that have been going on at EMS. This past month, we got a little bit busy doing some more flu shots. Normally, we don't do them this time of year, but we're normally done by now, but early in the month of, well, I guess mid-month in January, people seem to become concerned again about the flu. We don't have a problem with that, but we're not sure if there was actually an issue or just a media-driven issue that came up. Either way, we wanted to make sure we had vaccine out there because there seemed to be a lot of folks that were concerned, and we were able to work with the Macomb County Health Department actually to get some more vaccine. And we vaccinated people from both Macomb and St. Clair County, you know, at our station on 32 Mile Road. So that all went very well. We were able to get about another 100 doses, and we went through those all in about seven days, which coincided just about with the last news report on the flu being issued this year. So literally, it seemed to follow back somewhat. Either way, we got a lot more people vaccinated, so that's good. We had a blood drive back in January that we held at the Lennox Township Hall. Just mentioned, while I've got you here and the folks at home, that we're going to do another drive on March the 11th at our building on 32 Mile Road. The blood supplies are real, real short right now. People just don't seem to be finding the time to donate, and so the Red Cross asked us to do another drive. Normally, we had only done them in January and July. We're actually going to squeeze another drive in between there and this year in an effort to get some folks out. So that's going to be March the 11th from 3:00 to 9:00 at our building right on 32 Mile Road, just west of Richmond. There's just a couple of other mentions in there about our CPR training. We trained about 800 people in CPR over the past year, so that continues to be a very vibrant program for us. And then the last item there, just if you haven't been to look at it, you can see in a number of other communities, we actually go out once a month and provide health screenings, do blood pressure checks. We check glucose for people with diabetes or people who may believe they have it, and we do EKGs while we're there. We'll do that in any community, anytime. We don't set up just one day and do it. Trying to do a health fair hasn't really worked well, but if you have an event going on at the township, either occasionally or on a regular or routine basis, a seniors group or some gathering that occurs here, and they would like us to come out and do healthcare screening, we're more than happy to do that. We find it works best if people are here for another reason, if you will, and we also happen to be here to provide that service. But it's amazing to us, we've got a number of places we're doing it, as you'll see on that list now, but the number of people that we identify with blood pressure issues, maybe some minor cardiac abnormality or even either elevated or very low blood sugars. And so in those cases, really, all we can do then is refer them to either their primary care physician or a facility that would treat them, you know, if they were a person that might be uninsured or underinsured. There are a couple of facilities right in our area here who do provide those services. So we can always get them help if we need to in those cases. So that's really the update on the EMS side of things I did bring with me tonight, and I would not, I wouldn't expect nor am I asking the board to take any action on it. I brought our new, I guess, a renewal of our contractual agreement with the, with Casco Township with me tonight. We haven't changed the wording in this for about 10 years. It costs people money when we change wording because we all feel like we have to run it by our attorneys again. So being a guy who likes to not spend money that we don't need to, we've not changed any of the language in it. The amount is the same as it's been for the last 10 years or so, which is zero, and so there's no cost to the township for our service. Basically, the contract does a couple of things. The first thing it does is it protects us from each other. It holds us harmless from each other's actions. But the more important thing for us, and we do extend this out over a three-year period, so this would carry from 2013 until December 31st of 2016, is ambulances and the equipment that go in them are expensive. When we go to purchase them, we generally take bank notes for them, just like you do on your own car. And so, or like many people do anyways, on their own car. And so the bank likes to see that we actually have business, and so the contractual arrangements help ensure that the bank, we're going to have, you know, business to pay off our loans, if you will. And so that's really the reason we, those are the reasons we keep a contract in place anymore, even though, like you say, it kind of seems funny that you sign a contract that says there's no money that changes hands between, you know, Casco Township and EMS. So I'll leave those here with you. You can, like you say, you can put them on your next meeting agenda. I can be here if you'd like, if I can. We do serve about 10 communities, so I try to get around to all of them reasonably frequently. But that's, that's all that is, so you have that in front of you tonight. With that, what I would like to ask while I'm here at the board, this is a simple request, is that for a number of our communities now that document that I just gave you, our little newsletter there, in the interest of money-saving, if nothing else, we've been electronically sending that to a number of the communities, and then just somebody at the community takes it and forwards it to the board members. If we were to send that, I know there's an email address, it's casco township at yahoo. If I were to send that there, would it get to somebody that would actually be able to then forward that on to all of you?
Yes.
And like I say, that'll say us copying cost and postage cost, and I promise I'll still come back, even though I said I was just here to save the 44 cents tonight, or 46 cents, I guess, as of last week, for our first-class stamp. But I'll probably just start sending it to that if that's acceptable to you. Like you say, we've got about four or five of our communities that we're doing that with. Seems to work well for them, works well for us. We just scan the document in and send all the same information to you, and like I said, there's a little bit of cost savings in all of that for all of us. If that's okay with you, that's what we will do in the future. With that, I don't have anything else. All is well at EMS. We've been, our call volume has been steady, I would say. You know, people say calls up or down for the past, probably since the beginning of the period that people refer to as the beginning of the recession period, when, you know, people kind of quit building near so many houses out in the area, and we didn't have near as many families moving in and things. Our call volume has been pretty stagnant since that period, and that's unchanged. We haven't had a, we haven't had significant drop-off in runs, but we've not had a significant increase in run volume. So things remain status quo at EMS in that area.
We noticed in the newspaper there have been multiple stories of snowmobile accidents in the area, and that must be difficult for you, especially if they happen at night and you have to go look for them, so.
Yeah, we had a very serious one up just here north in Wales Township. I want to say it was the day after Christmas where there was a young woman killed there. It was right, we had got that big snow, and it was dark, and unfortunately, just a real tragedy up there. So that's the most serious one we've seen in this area this winter, but if I understand the weatherman today, they're talking about more snow for Thursday, so we just ask everybody to be careful, especially if they're going to be out on their machines at night. Snowmobiles look like a lot of fun. I don't discourage anyone from driving them. What I do is say, drive, just like everything else, drive safely, use a little bit of common sense, and certainly, you shouldn't be on property you don't know to start with.
Yes.
If you will. So some of our incidents occur because people are riding on property that doesn't belong to them, and they don't know where a fence or a wellhead or, you know, or a piece of equipment might be that could injure them or their riders.
Absolutely.
My gosh.
Okay, I got a couple of points. Tomorrow, we'll email you our email address, so you have it for sure.
Okay, very good.
No problem. Do you know when this contract, the current one expires?
It actually doesn't expire, expire until December 31st of 2013.
Okay.
So we've got time. That's why I drop it off tonight. I'm not worried about, I'm not worried about when you take it off.
The question is that we are.
But like I say, with the little 10 communities, I just try to drop it off when I'm out and, you know, if there are any questions.
It just saves money.
It's no, it's no big deal, but it's nothing you need to act on this evening, nor did I even expect it to.
Well, my next question is, you mentioned 10 before. I thought when we talked, you mentioned 11 communities. They all get the identical contract, just with a different name?
All the communities in St. Clair County get the, get the exact same contract. There is, there is some slight deviations in the Macomb County communities, but for all intents and purposes, the documents are materially the same.
Well, that leads to my next question. Currently, the fire department is first responder. If the township would elect to make the ambulance service the first responder, would this still be right the way it is?
Yes, yeah, we would not. I mean, we come with, the fire department comes and provides support to EMS on medical calls now. Nothing would change. We wouldn't send an additional vehicle. We wouldn't send additional people if we were, if we were operating as your first response. We would just respond as we do now, you know, to your runs, and no, there wouldn't be any, you know, increase in cost to the township.
Because back in 96, the townships at that time directed that ambulance would be first responder, and if they needed backup, another ambulance would be their backup.
Right.
Would that still take place?
Yeah, we, what we do now, today, even with the fires there, when we need emergency medical service backup, for the most part, what we need is another paramedic on the scene, another person at that very high level of training. For instance, in a situation of a person in cardiac arrest, the first ambulance shows up with one paramedic and what we call one EMP on it. The fire department shows up with medical first responders, which are very helpful, by the way. They can do CPR, they can get our equipment, they can help us ventilate the patient. There's a number of things that they can do, so I don't want to discount that service that they, that assistance that they provide. But what we need is oftentimes one other person to provide that advanced level of care. So in those more complicated medical situations, today, we send two ambulances or call for a second ambulance if we arrive and need it. And so none of that changes with whether you, whether a community elects to have the fire service respond or not. And so those, we just tell communities, that's an individual, that's an individual community decision. There are times, you know, today, on a night like tonight, when people are sliding off the road, my pager, I have it on vibrate, so I don't blow up the poor TV camera here to my left, but it's vibrating two or three times since I've been standing here. It's a busy evening at EMS. A lot of that has to do with probably vehicles sliding off the road with a little bit of snowfall we're getting, I'm guessing. I say that to say on a night like tonight, our response could be a little longer because we may have a unit coming from a little farther away, in which case your local fire service might be closer in that medical first response capacity. So, you know, there is some value in that area as well to the fire department response. Now, I know a community has to gauge all that with what it's costing. And, but not only what's costing, but what savings there would be. I always tell communities, gauge out what savings there would be to not have them come. And I'm not, I'm not telling you you should keep the fire department. I'm not telling you you should not keep the fire department in that first response capacity. I'm telling you that sometimes what I found in other areas that we serve is that if communities decide not to have the fire department, there isn't all that much savings because they still have a cost of doing business. They still have a certain amount of training. A medical vehicle truck, the pickup truck that they run to medicals or whatever they're using, doesn't cost a whole lot of money, but a fire truck, as I understand it, and I don't buy them, but it costs about a half a million dollars. They may not be, they may not be able to afford you the savings you think you might achieve by having them not come to a medical run. And I say that to say, take that up with your local fire service. You have two really, as you know, you have, you have probably two of the best fire departments we have in our, in our entire service area here in Richmond and Ira Fire Department, and I would really take up with their communities if there's any cost benefit to not having them there on those medical runs.
What the problem is we're having is you're already on the scene, and he's already loaded, the patient's loaded, and then I have to charge them a fee because our fire department's out there, and they have no contact at all with the patient.
Right.
And that's what we're running into.
I understand.
So we're going to have to sit down with the fire department and get an understanding that when they have no patient contact, we either need to get a break, something, because these people are having fits that they're having to pay when they did nothing for them. I understand that we need them, you're right. If it's, when they're there, we need them off. But I mean, I'm getting my head ripped off.
Sure.
From the ones that, and I had a couple today, and I hate having to charge them. So it's not your problem, but we gotta, the fire department's got to work something else with us, either give us a break on it or something, because it isn't right.
Jeff, is it the county dispatcher who makes that determination this time?
So, well, there's two options, okay, for communities, and you can do one or the other, but you can't make it great, all right? Here's your two options. A general law township isn't even required to provide fire service.
Right.
By law. Now, you do, and that's the right thing to do.
Right.
And, and, but by law, you don't have to. So you have, you have the same no obligation, if you will, to provide medical first response service. You have no obligation to provide that under the law. So you can say as a township, we are not going to have the fire department provide medical first response. We are going to have them come to fires, but we're not going to have them do that. If you say, well, we sort of might like them to come to some medicals, you can't do that. If they're going to come to medicals, if that's going to be your choice, then that has to be a decision under state law, once you, once you make that determination, that is handled by the county dispatch center through what's called Emergency Medical Dispatch Protocol, which is a, it's really a really interesting system where the dispatcher can actually punch information into the, into a computer about the nature of the call and what the callers told them. And at the bottom of the computer screen, if you will, a recommendation pops up that says, send the fire department or don't send the fire department. And it's based on national standard information. I can tell you that overwhelmingly, the system's going to recommend the calling of the fire department because the system's going to default, if you will, to what's in the best interest of the caller. And since a computer can't know all, you know, you're still going to end up with pretty frequent fire response if you're using the EMD system. So I don't ever tell anybody, geez, if you're going to see, if you use the EMD, you're going to see a big drop in fire calls, you know, because really, we've not found that to be the case as the EMD has been in place.
So did I understand you to say that you can contract the fire department for fires only and not to support the EMS?
That is accurate. Yes, absolutely. You could, you could have.
Then you would then be the first responder, and the fire department respond for fire calls only.
That, that is correct.
The only problem is if they do need the fire department and somebody dies and we're not, no, we're not, he just said, we're not at fault. We're, we're.
I would, I'm not an attorney, and so this gives, so I don't like to say, would, so we get any response in your community, and somebody thinks that we have erred, whatever that error is. The likelihood is that you're going to get named in that suit. Now, will you actually lose money in that suit?
You can't.
I'm not a judge, and I'm not, nor am I attorney, but are you going to have to defend it?
Yeah.
That is probable. And, and so I say that to say, there's not a good answer to that, because I don't know if that, that doesn't have to do with just this issue, that has to do with any issue. If we go through heaven forbid intersection your community and strike a motorist with the ambulance on the way to a call, the likelihood is you're going to get named in that suit, as are we. And that's just the way lawsuits work nowadays. And so I don't know if we can say, well, if the fire department doesn't go, we're going to suit. Heck, I don't know.
Well, the problem is twofold, really. They've changed the guidelines for the dispatch protocol. So two years ago, we had six medical runs in Casco Township for the year. This past year, we had probably close to 60. Same scenario, different protocol. Well, that might be well and fine. The trouble is, we have three townships working with the city of Richmond. Two of the townships use our system. The other township first responder is ambulance. Well, our bill for the year is predicated on fire runs. So that township that does not utilize the fire department as a first responder is getting a mere fraction of the runs and ultimately saving a ton of money. So all the townships are negotiating with Richmond this year, so we're hopeful that we can come up with something that, you know, keeps it safe, but doesn't kill us, basically.
I would suggest to you only this, that if one of the, the one township that doesn't choose to use the fire department is Richmond Township, who owns the EMS, they'll gladly swap bills for it. Because they, they do, as our owners, contribute a considerable amount of money to the emergency medical service, far more than anyone pays for fire service. And I share that, not to say anything other than they've chosen to save some dollars in their fire service so that all of you don't pay for EMS. And so I, I, I would be careful with that argument, because like I say, they feel like they are in fact paying their fair share, and rest assured, they are.
Right.
Nobody said they weren't paying their fair share. What I'm saying is, if you're going to have a system designed to pay for the service for the whole area, it should be fair and balanced. Now, in the case Richmond Township, yeah, it's their ambulance service. They have revenue coming in to help offset that cost. Richmond Township does not solely absorb the cost of Richmond Lennox EMS. You know that.
I do.
But I'm just saying, the system has to be balanced, so that's equitable. So that's what we're going to do. It's no hit against anybody. It's just with the new protocol, when your number of medical runs goes up by a factor of 10 times, you have to address it.
And just so you know, I don't think the protocol changed. What changed was a decision by the Richmond Fire Department, as I understand it, to start to say, they had, they didn't have real direction, with all due respect, from Casco Township is what you wanted, so they decided that they needed to start following that EMD protocol. Believe me, the EMD protocol did not change two years ago. The EMD protocol went in place back when we had all the discussions years ago about the CDA. That's when the EMD protocol started. What changed was a decision by one of your fire services to follow that protocol because they, they interpret their current agreement with you to call for responding to those runs.
But the dispatcher's protocol actually changed.
No, it didn't change.
At the direction of the fire.
Well, at the, right, right. At the direction of the fire department, they are following the existing protocol. But that protocol, just so you understand, was there.
A long time.
You know, whenever the CDA stuff went on, I lose track of time because, I mean, days fly by for me, but whenever the CDA stuff started is when that protocol went into place. And the thing that changed a short time ago was Richmond saying to the dispatch center, geez, we believe that our, you know, agreement with, it happened in both Casco and Columbus Township, we believe that our agreement with those communities, you know, calls for us to follow the protocol now. In the past, they hadn't interpreted it that way. So it was, it was a bit of a change in their interpretation.
Jeff, a couple of questions. Do often, like, if your crew goes out, it's a simple medical response and a fire department, how often do they find out they do not need the fire department? What percentage would you say?
I don't know if I have a good answer for that question. And I hate to answer questions with non-answers. As far as, if we really looked at outcome-based method, means, you know, did the fire department response result in a person's life being saved? I would say that doesn't happen a lot. Having said that, is the fire department's help always beneficial to the EMS? Does it speed up the amount of time that we can get the person out of the house to the ambulance to provide the care that we provide pretty much every time they go? So do they serve us a benefit on scene? Absolutely. I mean, there is a benefit to my personnel, the having extra sets of hands to assist them with patient movement and other things that, so the paramedic can really focus on the treatment of the patient. Can I, can I tell you scientifically how often that makes a life and death difference? I don't think I've got a good answer for that, in all honesty. I just, I've not studied it well enough to. In all honesty, I just, I've not studied it well enough to, to, to be able to provide you, you know, something that I could hang my hat on and say, I'm sure this is, this is right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, have we answered any questions?
No.
Oh, go ahead.
Good question about how you compute your average response times. Because, looking at your table, it looks like there must have been a number of responses that were actually under eight minutes.
Yeah, the, um, so, what it is, is one of the response times there, um, if you look at the response time report, I'm gonna get it in front of me, so I'm actually quoting your numbers, or looking at your numbers. So, yeah, we probably had a couple of response times that were very, very fast, and, you know, you always have a response timer too, that's an outlier, that's, that's, that's longer. And, so, that, that gives you that eight-minute average, when you look at all seventeen calls. And by the way, a computer program puts this together, so I don't have the breakdown other than this front page report alike, and get that for you if you would like. What I tell people to really look at, though, is, if you look at the, um, the response time groups, we call that a fractile, a response time report, if you will, and that really takes each run and breaks it down, or takes the runs and breaks them down into, um, into minute kind of areas. And would indicate that, um, that, you know, in your case, you had four responses that were under eight minutes, eight responses that were under ten minutes, twelve, or, uh, three responses that were under twelve minutes, one response that was under fourteen minutes, and one response that fell at fifteen minutes or more. Um, which is just how we, we break them down. I tell communities, if you really want to evaluate what your response is, 'cause I always try to be, you know, you always wanna just be honest about these things, you want, you want people to really understand where they live, and how fast they're going to get an ambulance. Strike out the eight minutes at the top, and the fifteen minutes at the bottom, 'cause they're probably outliers, and look at those three times, and those three sections of times in the middle. And, so your response time in, um, in Casco Township, from the EMS, is probably going to really average ten to fourteen minutes. And that's being realistic, not trying to, you know, wow you with some number that, that we then don't meet. I'd, I'd prefer to be honest with you, and tell you what, you know, what, what that costs, or what, what it is.
Good answer.
Thanks.
I'm happy. Pretty fast.
Yeah, the, uh, like I said, the, uh, the, you know, the addition of the station number three on Grashan Avenue there, really made a significant difference, probably dropped response times, you know, overall in, um, Casco Township, by, you know, I would say, an average of three to four minutes, or whatever. We had looked at this pre-two thousand and three, which was the construction of that building at Grashan, twenty-seven mile road, these response times probably were all, you know, as an average, three to four minutes higher than what they are today, but we really, um, the north end of the township is well-served by our building on thirty-two mile road, and now the south end of the township's well-served by our, by our building at twenty-seven in Grashan.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Nope, thank you for coming and answering your questions.
You're welcome. I was gonna say at the end of the meeting, but my pager has really been going off, so I'm gonna say, so I'm going to go, uh, check in.
Go take your day.
Alright, thank you so much.
Good night.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on, correspondence, item A, pipeline safety dinner. This is a dinner put on every year by Paradigm, I believe, uh, for firemen, EMS, I think, police, townships, uh, anybody in the public that may be associated in any way with pipelines. It's a very good event. I went last year. Uh, it's at Alexander's in Marysville. If anyone wants to go, uh, make sure you have this form, there's a code number up in the top. When you call for reservations, you have to have that code number, or you're not gonna get a reservation.
For what date is it?
February twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, I believe.
At five-thirty.
It's a Monday, right, for twenty-fifth?
Yes, it's a Monday. And-
Five-thirty.
Does it have anything on here when the deadline for registering is? I don't remember seeing that, but it might be.
Uh, at least a week prior to the program.
Okay.
This'll be the nineteenth, or eighteen.
They give a presentation, and some of it, you'll learn something, you know, color coding of indicating the location of pipes, tells you more than just there's a pipe, it's the pressure, and a bunch of other stuff.
This, this might be a good story, simply because tonight in the newspaper, um, Times Herald ran a big story about the Enron pipeline's gonna run right in Columbus, and Richmond, all those areas right there.
That was North Columbus, it's Columbus.
Yeah, it said, it had Columbus there, and-
I read that, it's been in the news for a while.
Yeah.
It finally got approved.
Yeah, finally, so we might-
Okay, so, it's up to you if you wanna go. The next item is the road commission township meeting, that they schedule every year. It is February twenty-sixth, and there's two pages there, because they've changed the schedule a little. The front page says six to eight P.M., but that's not accurate, it's six-thirty to eight-thirty. And today, actually, we received a confirmation that, yes, we're scheduled from six-thirty to eight-thirty P.M. This is a very important meeting, because they tell you how much money they're gonna have for each township. Uh, probably how much the limestone's gonna cost, how much the chloride's gonna cost, are they doing work on the county drains, and a variety of other things, so it's a very good meeting. Hopefully, hopefully everyone can attend, but, uh, so do your best. I should've hit this one when Jeff was here, but I didn't. Richmond Lennox EMS Employee Recognition Dinner that they hold every year. That's pretty self-explanatory, so if you'd like going, it's held March the second at the KSC Hall, so, feel free. The next item is the property tax deadline. Colleen?
Um, the property tax deadline, uh, on your tax bills, is the fourteenth of February. Um, I would like the board to, uh, extend that to the twenty-eighth of February, uh, with the caveat that after the fourteenth, the bills will have to be either postmarked, mailed, mailed in, or delivered to the township offices. Um, the banks have instructions to collect only until the fourteenth. So, uh, if you can't quite make that deadline, um, my office will be open regular hours. Um, and on the, the last day of collection, the twenty-eighth, will be open until five. On the first of March, I have to turn my tax roll over to the county. So we will do what we can to facilitate you until that time.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Is it state borne action, or is it at the treasurer's discretion?
No, I think it's just the treasurer's discretion.
That's what I thought.
Okay.
Okay, so you get an extra fourteen days to pay your taxes, thirteen days to pay your taxes. Okay, moving on, item E. Uh, this is the rough draft, uh, they're gonna be coming out with an updated one, but it's the State of the Community Richmond Area Chamber of Commerce Breakfast, to be held April the twelfth. Get you the details when I get them, so, we'll see what happens. Okay. There's no questions on any of those, we'll move on, we have an old business, we're up to new business. Item A is the MTA Dinner, it's a yearly dinner, held by the St. Clair County Chapter of the MTA. There's a cost of thirty dollars per person. In past years, the township board has paid for any board member that wants to attend. So that would require a motion, I believe, and, uh, that is held on February the fifteenth. So, we have, we only have till the ninth to send in the reservations.
I make a motion that, um, we pay the, uh, the fee for any member of township board who would like to attend the MTA Dinner on the, um, the fifteenth of February.
Yeah.
Support it.
Okay, moved and supported, for the township to pay the cost. Any board member that wishes to attend the MTA, which is Michigan Township Association, for those that aren't familiar with it, to be held on February fifteenth, that costs us thirty dollars per person. I guess that pretty much says it all, can't think of anything else offhand. Uh, you just want everybody to, that plans on going, to send their own RSVP?
Yeah.
Doesn't matter, I guess.
When's the deadline?
The ninth of February is the, uh, last day to register.
Well, if we're gonna pay for it, I should know who's going.
That would probably be a good thing.
Yeah.
So, what, today's fifth to seventh, you'd have to do it by this Thursday, the seventh. So, if you're on the fence, let us know by Thursday morning.
Joe's going?
No, I'm going.
Anyone else go?
I'm still thinking.
It's Friday evening, so it's something-
Colleen's thinking.
Patty?
I'm thinking.
Oh, it'll be fun, it's Friday night.
Dan?
Don't think so.
No. But Joe's going for sure.
If you're going, let us know Thursday morning, so we can get the RSVP. Okay, we didn't vote on this yet, did we?
No, we haven't.
Okay, moved and supported, I'm not reading it again, or saying it. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, standing, motion carries.
Right.
Okay, item B, approve federal poverty guidelines for the two thousand and thirteen, and use of hardship exemption calculation formula. This is for the board review, when, uh, people come in on their taxes, there are guidelines involved as to get possibly, uh, some of your taxes lowered due to hardship. So the board, I guess, I know we did last year, I assume every year, they approve those guidelines. So that's why it's on the agenda, and it's in your pack.
I make a motion to approve the guidelines for two thousand and thirteen.
I'll support that.
Moved and supported, to approve federal poverty guidelines for two thousand and thirteen, and the use of the hardship exemption calculation formula. Any discussion?
Yeah, um, how often, I mean, per year, I mean, did someone come in for hardship?
I think we had, like, maybe, that were approved, maybe two.
Two or three.
Okay.
So, maybe a couple more applications that don't meet the guidelines, 'cause the guidelines are very low, uh, very low, as you can see.
Yeah.
And you, you do have to make application every year.
Right.
Right.
Circumstances change, and, you know, sometimes people forget to re-up that if, uh, they think it just carries from year to year, and it does not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we didn't vote on this yet, did we?
No.
Okay, moved and supported, any more discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, standing, motion carries. Okay, item C. Uh, last month, we made a line item alteration on the budget, splitting in the revenue area between general fund money and, uh, road millage money. And this year, we'd like to say, or this week, month, we'd like the same thing with the expenditure line item. So, as we spend money on the roads, and it comes out of the millage, if there's some left, it's easy to carry over to next year, so you can look at last year's budget, this year's budget, and say, okay. You know, like in this case, we, we're obligated to pay twenty-eight thousand dollars to fix that bridge, so we won't be paying it till next year, but we have that much money left in from this year, because we didn't spend it, because they didn't do the bridge yet. So it should make it very easy to track the millage money, so if anybody has a concern that it's going to the roads, they can do it very easily. So what we need is a motion to approve the budget
protesting.
Addition from contracted road service one oh one, one oh one, eight thirty, to an additional line item, one oh one, one oh one, eight twenty-eight, contracted road commission millage.
I see.
Who are we gonna use, Colleen or Dan?
It doesn't matter.
Colleen and Dan.
Somebody supported?
One can support.
Okay, moved and supported. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, I think we have, we're gonna roll call vote.
Roll call vote, okay.
Okay. Colleen? Yes. Theo, I mean, Bill.
What'd you say?
Theo?
Theo.
Who is this person?
I vote aye.
Okay. Uh, Pat, aye. Dan?
Yes, aye.
And Joe?
Yes.
Who's Theo?
I don't know. Ask my poor husband, I can introduce him as Joe and Fred.
Okay.
Yeah, he's used to me.
Okay, the next item is payment of the bills.
I make a motion we pay the bills.
Support.
Moved and supported to pay the bills. Is there any discussion on that? And as you saw in the financial report, they added up to forty-some, forty-five thousand dollars.
Right.
And change. No discussion, then we'll need a roll call vote.
Roll call. Dan?
Yes, here's Joe.
Joe?
Uh, yes.
Me? Yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Uh, we're up to citizens' comments.
Oh, that was no.
Well, we have our NEMC representative out here. Tell us the highlights of-
He had a report instead, didn't he?
Hmm?
Yeah.
Well, I just asked some questions, what our supervisor wanted to know.
Oh, that's right.
You did something besides that, what did you do?
And we approved a new budget, and we're not gonna spend as much money on, on equipment this year, like we did last year, correct?
Right.
And, I was, you know, highlighting the budget, that was about it.
Okay.
Well, and last year, you did buy, what, you bought the big studio camera?
Yeah, three.
And you bought three?
Three studio cameras.
What you bought, to take out the field, two?
Oh, yeah.
Two field cameras.
Two field cameras, yeah.
So-
Tripods, um, upgrades to the computer, um, quite a few things, actually, so.
Well, that's good.
Yep.
We know you're gonna do a good job this year.
Yep.
If anyone, anyone out there is interested in possibly filming events, such as meetings like this, or Good Old Days, or the Sucker Fest, uh, contact the township, or NEMC Channel Six, and they will certainly train you, and they'll actually pay you a little bit of money to do it. Okay, citizens' comments, anybody else?
Um, is there, have they set the date for the Sucker Fest?
No, not that I know of. Somebody said something, but I'm not sure that it was accurate, I haven't gotten anything in writing, or even-
Some late April, early May, like it usually is?
Yeah, because Easter's very early this year, so somebody's, somebody said an early date, but I'm not gonna mention the date, 'cause I don't know if it's accurate.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
This morning, I attended, um, a seminar for the township. It was the Michigan Critical Incident Management System. It's powered by a company called Web EOC, and it is a statewide secure system that provides specialized tooling for managing crisis information and emergency response, as well as non-emergency response. The MICIMS provides real-time information to authorized users anywhere internet access is available, with permission based on incidents and positions. And the event recording process, which is what we were learning this morning, um, involves creating an incident using a computer, smartphone, or tablet, which I hope to have soon. And then, we, we provide an activity log and a significant events board. I don't believe that this, um, position usurps any, anyone, uh, not nine-one-one, not fire calls, not anything like that. What we're doing, um, is creating an event, if something should happen in Casco Township, where we can post it on this, uh, website, and people can follow it. The most practical use that I could see this morning would be, um, if we had a, a bridge out for any amount of time. We would say where the bridge was, and how long it's going to be out, and why it, it is out. And, uh, it's an emergency response, uh, sort of, uh, board, and it just keeps time of actual events, and the, the span of time, and what we're doing about it. And it lets everybody else know. We can, we can go on-site and see anything that's happening in the state of Michigan, um, that pertains to us, including traffic, and weather, and, um, uh, all sorts of hazardous, uh, incidents that are happening. And you can see it in real time, and pull it up online, and, uh, so it was very informational.
Thank you, for attending me.
Well, I'd just like to mention that this is, like- Well, I'd just like to mention that this is like a coordination of Homeland Security, and they requested a liaison representative. Colleen was good enough to, uh, be willing to do this. So, we'll see.
What is the, what are the letters, M.I.?
M.I.C.I.M.S. It's an emergency response system. And, uh, you will go online in real time to say what your emergency is. And, and let's say that you're in the midst of an emergency and you need something. You can put out a call for help. You might need sandbags, you might need bales of hay, you might need something. You can get that out there and say, you know, this is what I have, um, this is what's coming, this is what I need. And it's, everybody's just interactive. I mean, you wouldn't know that unless you, you logged on and to see what other people need. But it, it's kind of a backup support for emergency responders. You know, like I say, don't call me in an emergency, you call nine-one-one in, in the township. It doesn't change that at all. This is just an informational sharing website.
Okay, anyone else have anything? And we are up to adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We'll support it.
Moved and supported to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And adjourned.